Four, three, two, one.
Councilperson Ike Wanjali.
Present.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lemore.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. We have a few items on the agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pasto to get started.
Thank you, your honor. Again, we have a number of items. First item we'd like to talk about is a presentation regarding the plan that was completed in late 2000 and in 2010. There's a number of things that you're going to go over. Probably spend an hour and a half going through details on it. I think he's going to at the end, we'll share with you the progress. That, I'll get ready to go. Presentation here where I am going to hit the highlight. Presentation. Display things. Basically, 2017. Contracted Plan Moran to do the not just a strategic plan, it's a assessment and strategic. Assessment of future as far as planning. They're also assessing their current status. Technology and our service primarily our so they were contracted in all of 2017 and some that was completed. The plan provides an overall review. We were at, we were at the time and steps and processes to be taken. Would say that we're getting into this process, kind of felt like that provides good service. Sort of felt like we weren't being proactive on moving things forward and using felt like somewhat we did do bigger projects with the project management. So, what we said, that ran through the assessment. Turn around where they thought we were at. Purpose of the plan. Guide IT investments and operations.
Over the, over the next five years, hopefully my screens will come back up here. So, the goals of the plan or some of the items that were in the plan, there they are, was to improve customer service, enhance the operational efficiency of IT, improve, I should say, not just IT, but also other departments within, all the departments within the city. Improve IT processes in general, enhance technology deployment and governance, and provide for best practice project management technologies. I just went past a slide. So included in the plan, as I was saying before, there is a strategic plan for what we should do moving forward. There is a recommended project portfolio, which I'll touch on here a little bit later in the process. And there's also a detailed, very detailed IT assessment that we'll touch on and look at a few things from. Awkward here. One of the pages that was in the IT plan. Can't see up there right now, was just the general strengths and weaknesses of IT. And I'll just go down some of them here. Some of the strengths were city management was, had a commitment to support and foster IT services and in technology in general. Leadership and communication, end users were generally satisfied with the communication from IT staff. Knowledge of the business, they generally felt that IT had a good knowledge of the business. The customer support was really good and a response, eighty-five percent of users were satisfied with their services. Technology awareness, departments were attuned to the benefits of technology. So that was a good sport. We have some strong software, end user software such as Laserfish, which I'll talk about a little bit here in a little bit. But departments seemed to want more functionality from those software is one of the things that they said. At the time, we were just still working on the new website. It said that there was a tremendous effort there and that it was going to provide much better information to constituent constituents, which it definitely did. And then GIS continuity. There was, it wasn't really a strength, but it said recent resource loss provided a opportunity for investment moving forward. Some of the weaknesses though were IT governance was not formalized. There was a technical skills gap, meaning that from a user standpoint, there was limited amount of training going on. Documentation in general was, kind of knew that going in, that we need, we do a lot of things and know what we're doing, but we don't write it down and document it that well. So, for example, there's not really a network map out there that could be provided to the consultants to look at. Security controls and processes weren't documented, but you know, they're, they're, they're in place, just not documentation. Service levels, while we do have contracted for service levels in our agreement with the county, there's not a service level agreement in place currently that's up to date. That's one of the things that recommend, you'll see in the recommendations to move on with that. Applications sustainability, we're moving on this now, but there are some things in the public safety area that needed updating, primarily the records management system. Communication, basically they, they recommended city and the county work on better communications in the IT processes. Email, many users sort of complained about our Google email interface, so they thought that was potentially a weakness. Disaster recovery, there isn't really a disaster continuity plan in place right now, so that's one of the recommendations in here is to develop one of those. And technology planning and project management felt were weak. Some of the items that were in the actual survey data that were provided to, to the the results of the survey that were done by the consultant were that the interaction with the county help desk was positive, eighty-two percent of people said it was positive. They were satisfied with the quality and effectiveness of service delivered by the county IT staff, eighty-five percent of respondents said that. Problems are resolved in an appropriate timeframe, eighty-seven percent said that. Generally good things, county IT support staff basically know how to fix things, eighty percent of people said that. Their customer service oriented, eighty-five percent of respondents said that. Then on some of the lower ends, there's a clear process for how technology related projects are identified, reviewed, prioritized, and executed. Only fifty-seven percent said that, said yes to that. And adequate job related technology training opportunities are being offered to computer users. That was only at fifty-two percent. So there's a couple areas for improvement. And the technology planning is aligned with the needs of the business units departments. That was only sixty-seven percent. The last one was related to telephones, which since then we've upgraded our phone systems, so that one's not applicable anymore. Back to the presentation here. See the PowerPoint, because it likes PowerPoint, but doesn't like anything else. Okay, so I'll maybe stay in PowerPoint. So the goals and strategies that were developed in the plan are listed here, there were five of them. Number one was to align IT with business strategy. That included establish an IT vision and mission, establish an IT steering committee, and to set IT project and operational priorities. Now, if you've reviewed the plan, there's suggestions for all three of those in there. And I'll, I'll show you those in a minute here. Goal two was to maximize the city's IT contracted services. I think it was 2008 or 2009, the city contracted with the county for IT services. We don't have any employees that do that work. At the time, we were sort of transitioning between the two. So right now, we have a contract with the county and, and as it, as the consultants reviewed it, they were, like I said, impressed with how the county dealt with the day-to-day operations and were very happy with that, how they fixed things and kept things operational. They were a little less thrilled with how things were documented and how things were looked at in a longer term basis. So, those are the things they were talking about in terms of correcting deficiencies. And so what they recommended is that we work with the county to try to correct those deficiencies with the county, but if we can't correct them with the county, then consider going out for an RFP for contracted ser, another different contracted vendor. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more here as we go. Manage to an IT operational budget, which we basically do, but I don't think the IT staff really has, I manage the IT budget, but the IT staff don't really have that. And there's some, some IT things that are in department budgets and not in the IT budget, such as printing supplies and printers, some service contracts for some software that are just specific to that one department. So the program recommended bringing that all together into one IT budget. And actually having the steering committee review that from time to time as to where we're at. Recommended establishing basic service level agreements with our vendors. When we contracted with the county, we did have a contract that said you'll do this, 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 and this, and big long list of things that they'll do, but there was no really performance metric in place. So, that's where it's missing the goal, is that we need to institute some of those performance metrics and then also set IT standards and procedures such as minimum standards for workstations, when workstations will be replaced, security procedures, disaster continuity plan like we talked before. So those things are all in there. Goal three was to develop a future IT delivery vision. We create a long-term vision for city IT. Some of that is actually recommend, what could or should be there is, is in the plan itself. Identify future IT projects that support the vision. Create an IT service model that supports the future projects. So once we've identified the vision and those projects, then create an IT service model either through a vendor, employees, whatever is needed to support the future, future projects and service needs. Goal four was to leverage existing applications, so provide a training on existing applications more than we do now. And then create a business IT user group for major applications, so that users can get together and discuss issues they're having with the products and, and bounce them off of each other. And goal five was to optimize the city's IT stra, or GIS strategy, resources and service delivery. So, I think most of you know that we've been trying to hire a bit, what we title is Business Intelligence and Data Coordinator. We've, we're on our, our second and a half tried, say, right now. Got a couple good candidates this time around, so I'm hopeful we'll get that filled, but it's, it's been since last, early, last spring that we've been trying to fill that position. But hopefully we're at a place now where we're going to get that position filled in, in the not-too-distant future. But that person is, one of their jobs interns of managing projects and helping to get technology out into the departments is to supervise the GIS process. And not so much to be the GIS person, that's going to be the person that draws maps and lines and things like that, but to work on what data is going to be in the GIS and make it more of a useful tool for the city. So there, it also recommended formalizing a GIS resource sharing partnership between the city and the county and establishing inter, basically a standard intergovernmental data and service sharing partnership agreement. So that if there's another entity out there that we want to share information with, we've got a standard agreement that we can say, can rely on and, and offer to them. And once all that's in place, it recommends doing a formal GIS strategic implementation, implementation plan that would help, it would focus on fostering economic development, remote delivery of core services, find roles with required functional expertise, align GIS support roles and service accordingly. We have some assets that are restricted to who can see them, so we've developed a policy as to what the public access would be to those. And we engage public safety stakeholders to get their information implemented into the GIS so that it was helpful as delivery of service tool. And the plan recommends working with public education in the area to get some of their information and our information together to help with delivery of services in those areas as well. So that was kind of section one of the report. In section two of the report, there's an expanded explanation of each of those goals. And then there's specific action items that would, that should be taken to implement and achieve those goals. So it's kind of like a roadmap that, and how they're recommending we get things done in that regard. So, I guess you guys aren't going to see it because it's on my screen, but not on yours for some reason. But, for example, the, the goal that said align IT with business strategy. There's an organizational chart that shows how the city management and the county should work together and how the, how the, the, the software groups that we talked about are included and how the, the committee that we talked about is included and how county IT staff. And then there's formal recommendations on, on what should be done. There's a, you know, there's a, a specific vision that's recommended, a specific, specific mission that's recommended. And then there are project and participation goals that are included in there that it also recommends adopting. So every one of those goals that you saw on the, on the PowerPoint there are included. Have the, have that layout in the plan and it gives a specific recommendation for how to implement it, when to implement it, and things like that as you go through the plan. After section two is there's an implementation plan for both strategical, strategic and tactical items. And each of those strategic areas is listed in the table. I was going to show it to you on the screen, but I, for some reason I can't. But it gives you, basically lists them and gives a sub-strategy for each of them, and gives you a timeframe for when to implement it, is more or less what it is. And then there's the tactical implementation items, which are more the actual technology projects that the plan recommends we could look at. And what I've got listed here are five of about, about twenty, I want to say, that, that they were, have listed there. So some of the examples are replace and expand wireless infrastructure. We've had wireless in this building for quite a while, but we haven't moved it out much to the other buildings in the city. It is slowly being moved out, it's, it's been in the fire, main central fire station, there's plans to move it into the police department. There's currently plans to move it into wastewater. So we are doing that and slowly moving that out. Expand then you, the use of Laserfish in all departments. Laserfish is our, at its base is a document imaging software, so it's kind of like a electronic file cabinet for documents. But it's, it's much more than that. That's what it was originally purchased for here at the city. It includes workflow processes and forms. So, right now, we're using the workflows internally to route, for example, our accounts payable invoices through departments. Our accounts payable processes paperless, we don't deal with any paper, it is in the finance department anyway, as far as that goes. But, and the, the Clerk's Freedom of Information Act processes is done through that workflow process internally. The next big step for us as far as Laserfish goes is, is purchasing their forms module, which is, which is actually budgeted. But with the, the forms module, we'll be able to put forms out on the internet and citizens will be able to submit information via those forms. We also have this little module that works within Laserfish called Connector that then can take that information that the citizen submitted via forms and move it into our BSNA products for us. So, that's one of the things that the new position would work on as we get going there. Hope to expand that use, definitely with a lot of the forms that are already on our website in, in the future. We need to do an evaluation of the network and security, replace a storage area network that's actually budgeted this year and, and county IT is working on getting that moving. And then implement mobile solutions for field staff. Didn't say any specific mobile solutions, but generally to make it more make staff more capable of being able to do their work in the field. And then the next section there is appendix A where there's a large list of assessment findings. It basically goes through each area that we've already talked about. And it gives it a, a rating in terms of its maturity and, and its risk as to whether it's a high-risk area, low-risk area, or a medium-risk area. And then there's some long text observations that it gives you about certain things, such as in this area on applications. BSNA is providing a solid solution for finance and assessing is offering great support for the products. And there's about ten other things that it lists there, but then it offers some opportunities for improvement in each of those areas. And so those are the things that we'll be focusing on, focusing on to improve things in the city as we go forward. Included in appendix B are, it's really great if I could show you this, but technology surprisingly is not cooperating here. I didn't put it in the presentation because I thought it would look better on a separate document, but it's not cooperating. So, but basically in the plan, in that appendix, there's a table that displays the, the different area, the stakeholder, different stakeholders, such as the city council, the IT steering committee, the city coord, the city IT coordinator, which is me and the county IT at this point, and then other stakeholders. And it lists under whose jobs, who has certain responsibilities for IT policies and standards, annual technology planning, annual technology budgeting, enterprise projects, and departmental and line of business projects. And so that's the general format we'll be following to govern IT in the future. So that's appendix B. Appendix C, our, a number of sample IT policies are listed and it tells whether the city has one formally adopted or not at this point. Those are a number of them say no, because we don't have formal written policies adopted. So that's somewhere we'll be going in the future. While we do have policies in place, like I said before, a lot of them aren't written down and documented as they should be. And then appendix D has a number of options for service level metrics, basically performance metrics that we can look at to track and, and different formats for them in the future that can help out with those service level agreements that I talked about in, in the beginning. So the short-term plans, number one is we want to get the positions that are talked about in the plan hired. We want to get the coordinator position hired, which we're close on. And we also have a GIS technician position, essentially, basically the person that would maintain the GIS on a day-to-day basis. Right now, we're contracting for that with Ritter and, and Associates. And so that would take the place of that contract. We want to get, we have the IT vision and mission ready to go. Once we have the steering committee adopted, we'll review that with the steering committee and plan to adopt that. And when, when that steering committee is up and going, it'll set IT project and operational priorities. Help to identify future IT projects and work with the county on the identified deficiencies and needed policies and plans that were identified in the plan. So that's what I have for you tonight. Any questions or comments on the plan?
Questions from council?
Thanks, your honor. Ed, on page seventeen of the plan, there's that cost comparison between current IT budget and might to assume that's comparison if we were to go out for a third-party private vendor, what the cost savings would be?
Yeah, that's our consultant's estimated. I think, yeah, you're right. It's their estimate of what the cost would be for a third-party vendor versus what we're paying to the county at this point.
Has, has the county been, county seen the report?
They've been given the whole plan, yes.
Okay. The, the other question I have is, there's eighteen operational strategies and fifteen tactical strategies and they all, the majority of them have to be done within six to twelve-month time horizon.
Yeah.
So when I took a look at that, the question I have is, do we have the capacity to actually implement all those?
I, I'd say the time horizon is a little aggressive, honestly. I mean, it's something that we'll work on, but I I, I think it's a little aggressive, I'll just say that.
I mean, based on everything that they had, what, what's your estimate you think that it would take to actually maybe get seventy-five percent of them completed?
Yeah, I mean, it, we've been kind of waiting to get those positions hired, so some of it depends on that.
Okay.
But, and some of it are going to take third-party contracts, like doing a continuity plan is probably going to take some third-party contracts to get that done. Maybe a security assessment. So those are the things that will likely be included in, in this year's IT budget. But I would hope those things that are six to twelve months would be within two years. That's, that's my best guess at this point.
Okay. I guess a follow-up to that, a, one of the items you mentioned about the policies, and obviously there are policies, they're just not recorded. Where's that going to fall as far as the duty or responsibilities administration? Is it going to be the higher or?
No, it's going to be a, I mean, that's something that we're going to work with the county IT on. I mean, I, I look at a lot of this and I I say you really just need an IT person to take this and run with it, more or less. So that's something that we're going to work with county IT on to see what they can do for us. And as I said in the presentation, if we find that we're not getting what we needed, then we may have to consider going out to a different vendor and do an RFP. But I think it lays it out in the the governance plan, that that's kind of the responsibility of the IT coordinator, which is kind of jointly shared at this point between me and the county.
Okay, thanks. Other questions from council?
Brian? Yeah, I noticed that you mentioned Ritter as one of our contractors currently. That you were trying to hire a person in order to take over for what they're doing. Is there, is there cost savings to hiring a person versus maintaining Ritter? Or is that person going to do multitasking versus Ritter, what they're going to provide their services for?
I expect there will be, until we get there and get that person in. You know, I, I can't guarantee that obviously at this point, but I do expect there would be a savings. We're paying Ritter, I think it's about seventy, eight hundred dollars a month. So, you know, take that over a year and you're into some pretty good-sized money and, and, yeah, I expect it to be, the position to be less. Unless we get somebody with extreme qualifications that, you know, we have to pay more to, which I would be surprised at, would be the only way I'd see that not. Unless we get somebody with extreme qualifications that, you know, we have to pay more to, which I would be surprised at, would be the only way I'd see that not saving money.
Mr. Pasto?
And, you know, I think with what we were pleased with the service provided by Ritter, but it is pretty much baseline. Even if it is a, a financial wash, we anticipate with this GIS position that a lot more data will find its way into the different departmental operations that can be used for certainly in some cases, you know, resource, personnel deployment, that type of thing. And so we envision that that position growing into that capacity using, but it is kind of, you know, basic information that we're having now and updates. So I think we can take it to a little further along than where we're at now.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sell. Appreciate it. I'm sure there'll be much more to come. This is, we also want the positions to come up.
Just in a closing, I just sat there just, you know, trying to put together what the vision would look like, but certainly from our, you know, that we would be using update, updated technology that provides enhanced customer service experience, provides current management information data to deploy personnel in an effective and efficient manner, and also improve operational efficiency and security. So I think we're trying to cover the bases with this. That would be kind of the form, and I think the structure is there. We just need to get a couple of people on board and I think we'll be moving in that direction, so.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Your Honor, is the discussion of the capital improvements program. I see that City Clerk has that up there. I'm going to start by, if you go to the next one there, I'll just give you a little agenda. We'll start with Mr. Green providing an introduction a little bit about the capital improvements program. I'll talk about some of the challenges and opportunities somewhat similar to last year, a few of our general administrative requests, and then get into the engineering department, utilities department, on some of the projects that they have, since they are kind of the lion's share of the capital improvements program. So, you know, with that, Mr. Green, if you would just give a brief oversight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeffrey Green, Director of Community Development. It's always, I think, good to have a, to reacquaint ourselves with the capital improvements budget each year and kind of remind ourselves what it is, what we do with it, how it comes about. And the capital improvements budget program is a multi-year schedule of public improvement. It's usually covering about five or six years. And regardless of the community size, communities throughout the country do something in process that's relatively similar to what we do here in the city. Capital improvements program is typically made up of two components. First is the capital budget, which covers the first year of the program. It includes all the capital projects to be funded by the governing body in the upcoming fiscal year. The capital improvements program covers the remaining five years, which in our case, we use a six-year program. And so that would be a snapshot of the projects from departments and agencies that are proposing projects, again, in the upcoming years, twenty twenty through about twenty twenty-five, I think, at this point. Projects may be one-time projects and, and funded one year only, or they may be phased in covering multiple years. And annual CIP expenditures, those which are part of the capital budget and involve actual spending should be tied to the master plan. And ideally, every project request should evolve from the plan, if at all possible. And in fact, one of the questions that we put on our project information sheets, which we send out to every agency and every department that is requesting funding, is whether the project comports with the city's master plan. And here it's, the department demonstrates each project or how each project relates to the plan. The question is sometimes asked why Planning Commission is involved in the budgeting process at all, and why they must make a recommendation to City Council regarding the capital improvements budget. Answer is it's mandated by the state-enabling legislation, specifically the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. It's also required by city charter. So almost without exception, requests in every given year exceed available funding. Hence, the need for a capital improvements budget that identifies and prioritizes projects that are most in need. The city of Monroe has traditionally spent approximately one mil of general fund dollars toward the capital budget. This year's budget is relatively straightforward, though, if you've taken a look at it, having the type of projects that council has seen in the past. There's really nothing out of the ordinary. Total project costs exceed about ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand and come from a variety of funding sources. And the city charter, if we move on, it requires that the capital improvements program and the budget that's before you tonight has a clear summary of its contents, a list of all capital improvements which are proposed to be undertaken during the next six fiscal years, with appropriate supporting information and the necessity for such improvements. Cost estimates, methods of financing, recommended time schedule for each improvement, as well as other information that staff, the planning commission, the mayor, or city council might feel or deem necessary. After reviewing the proposed capital budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and the capital improvements budget for the five years beginning in twenty twenty, the Citizens Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed budget, budget that you have in front of you tonight. The cover letter that's with your CIP booklet tonight is the official transmittal from the Planning Commission to the city council. Essentially, they are recommending approval of the budget as presented. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
We'll see if there's any questions from council from Mr. Green, and we'll move through to some additional parts to it.
Thought it was pretty thorough.
Thank you.
CIP document that we, that we received in our packet, I thought it was pretty comprehensive, very thorough, and had a lot of information in terms of how the projects are selected and what the description and the extent of the project. So I did appreciate that. Appreciate the planning commission's work on it as well.
And Mr. Pasto and I were talking today and we're, we're looking at it. And this will be, this was my twenty-fifth capital improvements budget. So we've worked on it a number of years and have been able to streamline that process, and it goes along pretty well and pretty, pretty smoothly now. Thank you.
Background, we'll go through other projects. When putting this together, some of the considerations that I utilize in the recommendation is certainly the financial resources that are available for the city. And certainly economic, and I use economic in a broad sense, economic development opportunities. Quality of life certainly is, is an issue that's identified through, in the, the master plan. Operational impacts, again, you have to take into consideration if you're making a capital improvement, you have the operational sustainability in the form of personnel and/or revenues to, to keep it going. The other thing that is, five and six, you know, with infrastructure asset management programs and the utilities, both water and wastewater have completed that. And as you know, Mr. Lewis and the engineering department do an assessment of our roads. So those are all pertinent information for us in, in prioritizing the projects that would go forward. From a regulatory standpoint, certainly, we've talked about the lead and copper regulations. And, and I think both Mr. Lewis and, and Mr. Leroy will talk a little bit about, you know, their coordination efforts regarding road projects and, and water projects as part of the process, and certainly utilizing technology more and more as part of our, our process. And talked a little bit about that with the IT program earlier. You know, financial factors, again, similar to what I did last year in discussing it, we need to try and get our infrastructure in as good a shape as possible within the next twenty years, certainly a function of the DTE plant and, and its downscaling of operations. At that point, it'll be almost a seventy-year-old plant. And so we need to, to keep that in mind. Certainly, the other financial factors, the DTE taxable value, part of the reduction that Mr. Green alluded to is incorporated into that as the, the money that we had set aside in the operating budget. Always concerned with the state of Michigan revenue sharing, whether it's revenue sharing. And when we get talking about the personal property tax reimbursement for essential services, how that's being utilized and the ongoing issue, although it's been favorable late, dealing with the Act Fifty-One revenue sharing for transportation projects. And then there's always kind of in the back of our mind, reductions in state grants, whether it's federal grants, CDBG or urban aid projects, although CDBG actually went up this last year. So need to keep that in mind. From an economic, make land use and capital improvements decisions that allow the city to harness current momentum from an economic opportunity. You know, listing certainly the logistics corridor opportunities that are developing, River Raisin National Park, downtown resurgence, our physical and historical assets that we have in this community and the Telegraph corridor, whether it's the Lazy Boy site or working in conjunction with our neighbors in Frenchtown and Monroe Township. Quality of life factors, build upon our, again, our unique historic assets, the River Raisin, you know, its beauty and recreational opportunities that go with it. Build upon the social trend that cities are cool again to, to live. Invest certainly in more walkable community, streetscape, traffic calming improvements, and certainly to invest in our parks to improve upon the quality of life here. And certainly, this year, we're talking, we'll talk, you know, about Labor Park being a big project. Operational, greater consideration regarding operational cost, as I alluded to earlier. Don't build something you can't maintain afterwards. And so I think, you know, that always is in the back of your mind. And then also look at other funding alternatives that may be available, and certainly in our dialogue with Labor Park, what can other resources, maybe we find out there, which we're still looking to potentially secure. Infrastructure asset management program certainly was mandated with water and wastewater systems, and that, those are completed. As I mentioned, Mr. Lewis and his department's annual road evaluation, ongoing sidewalk evaluation. And again, it's their important tool to prioritize projects, capital replacement versus maintenance. Interestingly enough, when we talk about bridge, about extending useful life, Mr. Lewis and I had an interesting conversation about bridges. And, you know, once they're fair, fixed, you still have to start doing preventive maintenance. So that's part of the program that goes with this. We can move on to the next one. Technology factors, again, improving operational efficiency, customer experience, system reliability. Again, particularly in the utility area, more and more information and over time here in the next couple of months, we'll talk more about the utilities department and their use of technology regarding meters and information. Some of the departmental projects that we have there, just in, before we go into the utilities and engineering, we've put aside fifty thousand dollars for strategic property acquisitions. I wish I could put a two in front of that fifty, but that's probably the best that we can do for, for the time being as we go develop the operating budget. There may be some opportunity to beef that up. I did put twenty-five thousand in there for Sawyer House improvements. Just there's a number of things to look at and consider as part of that facility. Labor Park, I mentioned that, that we put fifty, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars additionally into fiscal nineteen twenty. That adds on to the five seventy-nine that was in the previous appropriation. And then there's some, the Parks and Rec just a tractor with attachments in the equipment fund that would be replacement. I put this in your review of two thousand eighteen, nineteen facility projects. There has been a lot of work in this area, certainly with some city hall improvements, certainly in the council chamber here, as well as up on the third floor that have made it a much better environment. Police station, I have that in there as listed, although we did nothing there. Certainly, the two fire stations, the construction of the new station on Lincoln, and as well as improvements at the station over on North Custer. We've got well in, almost a hundred thousand dollars of improvements at the Arthur Lesaw Community Center, namely, re-roofing the facility as well as a new boiler. Monroe Multi-Sports Complex, got to scratch that eventually, but there are some facility improvements working with the National Park Foundation here with the improvements to that facility that'll be coming forward. Some improvements, they're limited with Sawyer House this past year, and then certainly the entrance to the Dorsh Library. So we've put a little focus on improving the facilities that we have here this past year. Now, this last two slides are just kind of a segue into Mr. Lewis's presentation. Clearly, road streets are a, a big issue for, for businesses and residents here in the community. And similar to what I talked about last year is looking at some of the funding for, for that. Based on our Act Fifty-One, the major street, the funding that we have is, is sufficient to maintain those. And by and large, I think they're in pretty good shape. Those are the major streets that we have in our community. We have major streets that are eligible for federal aid. You've got the, pretty much this calendar year, two major projects. One is, and I say there, there's actually three from a, a construction standpoint, but running First Street from, or front from Telegraph all the way into Washington and First Street, and, and then, then you have North Custer in there. State trunk lines, M fifty, pardon, actually, M one twenty-five be in particular, pretty good shape at this point. The state handles that. And then the city bridges with the millage that was approved by voters, our bridges are in pretty good shape. But as Mr. Lewis reminded me this afternoon, you know, we're a few years away from now starting to do some more capital maintenance related to extend the life of the improvements that came with it. The challenges, given the structure that we're dealing with, is certainly our local and residential streets are problematic from a funding standpoint. We do have some funding in there for sidewalks, but clearly probably not enough to keep it to where we should. Alley's, we do, got a couple of alleys in the project for this next year. But I think clearly that we need to make that a more functional aspect of our community and looking at the improvements that go with it. We know the industrial park off Attarnas Drive is in pretty bad shape and certainly have some ideas how we may get to, to funding that. And then lastly, St. Mary's Garden storm sewer improvements, and Mr. Lewis will talk a little bit more about that. But part of it is from a management standpoint, how do you evaluate the conditions of the roads and then try and devise some sort of divide and conquer? But number five, local streets, that's really where our big challenge is. So unless there's any questions, I'm going to have Mr. Lewis go up there and go through the project list that he has.
Mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I'll go quickly through these because I know time is at a premium. So if somebody wants to stop me on a specific question, just flag me down. Okay, I've got a summary up here of the projects that we're looking at from this year's funding. As Mr. Pasto mentioned, we do have one more carryover that was not done in two thousand eighteen, and that was the West First Street project, which is from Harrison to Washington. So that would get added to the list, although it's already funded. So we have six major projects for this year totaling a little over three million dollars. West Front Street from Telegraph to Harrison, Hollywood from Elm to basically north of Maywood, all of Jefferson Court, North Custer from the city line to just east of Telegraph, Maywood from McComb to Riverview, and Godfrey from Elm and Noble. I've listed seven other infrastructure projects here, a little over two million dollars. One of those was kind of pulled out in Mr. Pasto's presentation. That's the strategic property acquisition. We have our annual sidewalk replacement program. We're replacing about a half acre of roof at the DPS facility. Our usual half a million dollars roughly in stores, vehicle fund purchases, and the aforementioned St. Mary's Garden Storm Sewer project, along with the alleys and some money for the Heritage Corridor properties. The criteria we, we use for setting up our project list is we start every year with a block-by-block rating of the streets, and we combine those for longer sections. We, we don't look at each individual block. We look at a logical piece of that roadway that would, would make sense. We look at the traffic volumes, the age since the last project, whether they can use federal funds or not. As you might expect, federal funds will jump that project a little higher up than its condition might dictate if it was a local street. We look at the repair and maintenance history. Is there something intermediate we can do that's not, not a capital project? Coordinating locations, we don't want to do too many things too close together, but we do try to get some efficiency there with contractors. If we have a couple of streets that are close, that won't interfere with blowing out an entire neighborhood and having nowhere to park, we do look at those things as well. Our mileage we're looking at for this year is the highest, will be the highest since I've been here, if it's all funded. That's three point three miles. The previous high since, and I've been here twenty-one, almost twenty-one years, the previous high was in two thousand seventeen. That's three point two miles. But we did have to have some Act Fifty-One revenue bonds to pull ahead some funding. So two thousand nineteen will be a big year, as, as well as those projects that were carried forward from two thousand eighteen that were not done. I won't belabor this too much. You can read this maybe at your leisure. I'm sure this will be up after the meeting. But we do that annual block-by-block review. We did say it's in September, but we're going to move it this year to the spring. We think that actually makes a little more sense to start doing it in spring after the winter conditions. So this will be an eight, the current one's an eighteen-month report we're working off of. Rate the driving surface from zero perfect to ten impassable, and then curbs from zero new to four none. And we combine those ratings, and that's about a forty percent of the street condition is, is the curb condition. Additional point for major street or for a base failure, and then we combine those like blocks. So technically, the impassable major street with no curbs and a base failure would be a sixteen-point street, and a perfect roadway would be a zero. We, we never have anything at sixteen. We prepare a map and report on the city's webpage, and then we start looking at the highest rankings. Usually, when we get to about seven, we look really hard at eight. And then we review those with the utility director, and we look again, we sort the list for the federal aid eligibility. And we do have to commit to those projects two and three years in advance. and three years in advance. So, we line up those categories. I would like to point out, we're not always doing a worst first, because sometimes we'll combine a concrete street, we have a year where we'll do a big concrete program, we'll put aside an asphalt street for a future year, and vice versa, to try to get those efficiencies with contracts. We'll delay some projects where we have utility funds inadequate, maybe we've got one year, we've got a lot of utility needs, so I have to postpone a street or two until Barry can fund them, or vice versa. Advanced critical projects, one of those things now is can we get a street that has a lot of lead and galvanized service replacement? Hollywood's a great example of that, where we have a lot of lead and galvanized services. So, that one is a little higher up on the list for prioritization than it might otherwise be, but it's, like many other streets, it certainly justifies being done now, but that's a nice compliment to that. We look at geographic balance, we don't do one project per precinct, we're, we're not looking at that kind of balance, but we do try to not be all in one area at one time. We look at parallel construction on the routes, we don't want to have two major streets down at the same time. All right, I'm going to blow through the projects pretty quickly here. Our number one priority streets-wise is our federal aid job for 2019, and actually, our 2020 federal funds as well, that's West Front Street. Started out largely as a spot curb job, but as we started looking at the curb conditions, we're going to do most of the curbs there. So, total costs, we're optimistic that it'll be $950,000, it could creep above that depending on where the bids are. And as I mentioned, we're going to have to borrow the 2020 funds until October 1st, when those are available, but fortunately, that won't involve us having to float cash for too long. I mentioned three-inch mill and resurface, most curbs and drives last paved in 1998 when it was still a part of M-50. We're doing new directionally drilled water main on most of the project area, so that's another coordination project. Project number two is North Custer Road resurfacing, this one is a standalone job, we've actually had this out for bids right now. $750,000 cost, three-inch mill and resurface, spot curb replacement only. We are removing the islands as directed by the council, we are converting the roadway to two lanes, we are enhancing this with additional crosswalk markings and signage, and we're raising the islands about, or raising the intersections about eight inches at Cranbrook and Richards. So, those bids are due on February 21st. Streets number three, Hollywood, Elm to north of Maywood, as I mentioned, that's a total cost of $660,000, and we are coordinating that with a water main, new drilled, directionally drilled water main. And I don't remember what our number of lead and galvanize, I want to say it's around 60, is that correct there? 45? Okay. Somewhere in there. We're still reviewing the plans. Last resurfaced in 1981. Streets number four, Maywood resurfacing between McComb and Riverview, $280,000. This is a three-inch mill and resurface, we are replacing all the curbs, last done in 2002, but that was just a, a small inch and a half job with no curb work. We're going to narrow the block between McComb and Hollywood, I don't know if our clerk treasurer is interested in that or not, but we are going to have that match the rest of it, and that's in keeping with the theme that we've talked about, and that's rightsizing our infrastructure to try to minimize our cost down the road. And with no park, with parking allowed, but not really used on this section, there's really no reason it needs to be 32 feet wide. So, we are looking at, looking at saving a little bit whenever we can, coordinating again with a new water main. Number five, Jefferson Court Western, to hear on this fairly small job, but it does kind of complete the neighborhood, which we started back in 2010 with Woodville, and then 2014 with Western. So, we're doing a, a full curb job and full resurfacing. It's an original paving job, 1950s. New water main here as well, are you seeing a theme? Godfrey resurfacing, Elm to Noble, we picked this one up because this was a good spot curb project, not many curbs to do, so this will just be a, a traditional mill and fill with just a few curbs here. Last resurfaced 1985, and also putting water main here. Onto our infrastructure projects, we're, we're doing our annual sidewalk replacement program, that would be, we've got, and we don't start marking until April when the frost is out of the ground, but we, we're estimating around $100,000 for general fund, $50,000 for assessments, that's because we're starting to have pretty good success with the program, and a lot of our raised sections are due to city trees, so that we are liable for those. We've changed our marking standards a few years ago from three-quarter inch to an inch, that seemed to work out fairly well still. That's a, that's a vertical separation, or if there's more than a single crack in general deterioration, we'll mark those. This year's target area would be south of the river, west of Smith Street, and that keeps us outside of the downtown area, and then we'd try to do the downtown area all at one time. And we'd include any complaints that we get throughout the year in scattered locations. I don't have a picture of it because I didn't feel like getting up on the roof, and that is a picture of the DPS roof, and that's a $220,000 cost, which seems like a lot for a roof, till you figure that's, again, it's a half an acre roof job. So, it's currently leaking badly, especially when we have snow on the roof, it's threatening our sign shop and a lot of our parked vehicles inside. Number three was, we put in some money for Heritage Corridor site improvements, and that's sort of a non-specific item. We took a bus tour back in September, looked at all kinds of items, there's certainly a lot more than $100,000 we could do in the area, but this would be various removal, demolition of items, could be paving, could be parking lots, could be fences, could be trees. So, and we can also use these monies on matches for larger projects. So, I know Mr. Cochran in particular has been aggressive in looking at grants and things, and so some of what we do may be targeted at achieving a local match for something bigger. Number four, we don't, I don't have, I have a picture of our new Vector truck, but that's not what we're replacing. It's about a $500,000 expense, and that's funded through the Stores Equipment Fund, which receives its revenues from monthly rental rates to other departments, and hourly charges through the DPS, forced labor and forced equipment charges, like when we'll go out and plow streets, we charge those hours out to the various funds, major and local street funds and things like that. So, we're looking at four new police vehicles for next year. A couple of dump trucks, which we're going to look at those with what they call swap loader, where we can have various different attachments and try to get some versatility. And we're thinking over time, we may be able to shrink the number of units we have by a couple with, with having a little more flexibility, like being able to put a chipper truck on the back of a dump truck, so you can just swap out the chipper unit, but you can put a salt body on it for the winter time. So, those are the type of things we're looking at. Current medium-term needs that we're not including for 1920 would be the three other dump trucks, our Ford Sterling dump trucks are all 2001s, we've kept them up very well, but those will need to be replaced long-term, and a second sweeper, because our existing ones are quite old. We have one new one, but then two older ones. The St. Mary's Garden, you realize we went from four to, four to six, that's because we pulled out the strategic property acquisition, I didn't want everyone to think the city engineer can't count. St. Mary's Garden Storm Sewer Project, this is a comprehensive, large-scale issue, and we're calling St. Mary's Garden subdivision number three, which is kind of the area north of Hendricks, an area that was built very low relative to the surrounding area. It doesn't have the relief it needs to with toward the Mason Run Drain, and in fact, it actually runs, the land runs uphill to the Mason Run Drain, storm sewers have some challenges in there. So, we're looking at a comprehensive project that would add some finger lines down streets that don't have them, like McCormick and John L., and then potentially upsizing and maybe even having to put in a stormwater pumping station based on the grades that we've got. So, we're showing up to a million-dollar cost, we're still going to be working out the details, and within the next month or two, I'll bring to you a design proposal, likely from the Spicer Group who had done some preliminary study for us. And the last project I have up here is infrastructure number seven, and that is the alley projects we're talking about. We do have two in the hopper right now, and those are the alleys east of Monroe Street, south of First, and south of Second. And those have come to the forefront first because, one, their condition, and two, Michigan Gas had done some line replacement in the area last year, and in lieu of having them just patch that back, we're looking at, on one of the blocks, getting an at-large contribution that would go towards a, a more comprehensive, permanent project, and we think that'll serve everyone. But, as, as noted, alleys do not receive any funding through Act 51, so we're looking at a special assessment district for at least a portion of the cost. Right now, we're proposing 75%. So, and we like to put those back in eight-inch concrete, and for an alley, that will last in the 30, 40, maybe even 50-year lifespan. So, I will turn this over to my colleague, Mr. Leroy, for the water and wastewater side. Any questions for me before I leave?
I had one, because we talked about this at a work session, we don't have to go back, it was the, we, Front Street from Telegraph to the railroad tracks, we talked about those numerous curb cuts that are there, is that going to be looked at as far as maybe reducing some of them that aren't being used? I can't think, well, you know the location.
Yes, the, the answer is yes, there's not as many we could eliminate that we'd like to, but I know there's a couple of businesses in particular, one has already agreed to it, a second one, we believe, is parking vehicles in front of us, so we don't think that'll be an issue. And then there's a couple more we were going to try to massage as we went, went throughout the project. So, there's at least two that I know of that we have identified that should move for elimination.
Thank you.
Very good question, thank you. You're on, Barry.
Hi. While Mr. Lewis is still up there and has an opportunity to respond, and half of this question is going to be for, for Director Leroy anyway, so it's good that he's, good that he's here. I have a long-term and a short-term question regarding local road funding.
Okay.
First of all, the, the short-term question is, is our water, water main replacement project and our corresponding local road replacement projects aggressive enough to avoid any, to take full advantage of the savings, but really, it's a euphemism for avoiding costs implemented by recent regulations? And then is the, the road funding aggressive enough to keep up with that project? And it seems like from your presentation that the answer to that is yes.
The answer to that is yes, but I don't know how long that will be. I, I do have some concerns for this season based on price escalations we've already seen in the M.D.A. bid lettings, and that's due to contractor capacity, there's some amount of where it's just bidding the dollars up, that it's not actually throwing more money out there is, is helping, but it's, it's, it's being dragged down a little bit from that, from that cost escalation. Are we being aggressive enough long-term to keep up with our, with our local street funding needs? The answer to that is an unequivocal no, but I don't think any community has that ability short of dedicated funding, that's like, like a street millage, and I hate to use that as the only answer, but, you know, essentially, you've seen this, we're doing three miles a street on an 83-mile system. And if your average lifecycle cost of a road is in the 20-to-25-year range, and depending whether it's an asphalt or concrete surface will affect that, we ought to be doing four miles a year at a minimum to be able to keep up with deterioration. So, the answer is no, because this is an aggressive year, and if we're not even at four miles in an aggressive year, that, the answer to that question would be, would definitely be no. Hopefully, I answered it completely enough.
You, you did, and honestly, I thank you for that. Well, now Director Leroy knows what question I'm going to ask him soon, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater. Okay, would you like me to answer that question first, or? As far as long-term needs for the water system, it's rate-based, we look 10 years ahead with our funding. Same type of analogy that Patrick gave, if we have a, you know, 300-mile water system doing a, on a 100-year basis, that's three miles a year, we're doing about two miles this year. So, scaling that up is going to be needed going forward to keep up with those needs, to maintain the system. The average age of our water system, just because the bulk of our system is west of, in the western communities, is newer, our average age is around 40 years old. In town here, it's much older than that, but we also, also have a lot of legacy costs with lead and copper, or lead and galvanize, excuse me, to replace, and then we have a plant to maintain and a raw water pumping facility, so. Anyway, hope that answers your question completely enough for now.
Thank you. If only we were to rate-base our roads like we rate-base our water system.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There we go. All right, so as far as water and wastewater, I'm going to start with wastewater, we have four projects totaling about $725,000, I'll touch on all, all these projects. And on the water side, we have nine projects, about a little over $2.8 million. Criteria is very similar and correlated with what Manager Pastu and Mr. Lewis have indicated, age, repair and maintenance history, as well as project coordination, which we talked about a lot, and then we look at asset criticality, because of, you have one line, you don't have reliability, that could alter the entire system. Comprehensive plan, those are all addressed in the informational sheets, they all meet the needs, and we are self-funded. First up is the wastewater motor control center and distribution panel and transfer switch. These are at two regional stations, they're the two largest pump stations in our collection system. They, they're over 40 years old, it's a $300,000 request, it just, parts are not available. And these serve about 95% of the Frenchtown system, so we're responsible for maintaining the system and have to replace these. The crow's environment really contributes to this issue. Second is our sewer rehabilitation project, it's about $230,000 request, there's four locations, and as Pat talked about, we just, we don't always do worst first, so we correlated a lot of projects, tried to get the best bang for our buck. So, if you notice, all these locations this upcoming year we're proposing are in the F Street area. Two of them were paved last year, but the other two are not. They have a lot of root intrusion, inflow and infiltration that we're going to address with this project. It's about a little over 3,000 feet, and the age of these are all 1929 vintage. Next is our plant air compressor replacement. The DEQ requires us to have redundant equipment in every piece of a treatment process, and if you notice in the picture on the left, the green one, that's a newer air compressor, and the one on the right's the one that's over 25 years old. We've had a lot of repairs on that, and parts are really hard to find, so we're proposing to replace that, and then use that as our primary air compressor. Then last, on the wastewater side, is our scum well grease collection system, we're proposing to enhance that. Currently, the process is, we have a well that collects grease from the treatment process, and then we wait for it to get colder. Unfortunately, it becomes more solid, so then we're able to landfill it at that point. This will enhance that system, where we'll be able to do it all year long, and be much easier to handle and less labor-intensive. So, the space on the left is where we were planning on putting it, it's in a prior sludge handling area that had equipment that's been removed, so we're just repurposing that space. So, it's $150,000 request to enhance that. Now, moving over to the potable water side, we have five locations in West Front, Jefferson Court, Hollywood, Maywood, and Godfrey. Patrick's already talked about them being road projects, they're all coordinated. The age of the pipe is 1915 through 1955, it's just under two miles. We will replace all the lead and galvanized lines up to the beater, per the 2018 lead and copper rule revisions. There's 145 locations that are suspect to be lead galvanized or unknown, those are all in these project areas, which we'll be addressing this year. Next is our filtration division, the filter and clarifier valve actuator, valve and actuator replacements. There are 16 of these at the plant, and again, this is a regulatory requirement, we have to be able to control the flow at the plant for treatment purposes. What we have found is, this equipment's over 40 years old, and some of the valves have actually failed, like broke, and it's kind of unique because the manufacturer's never seen that before, so we, the picture on the right is actually a replacement valve and actuator that we worked with the, our vendor to get to submit the equipment back to the original manufacturer to investigate that, but we're proposing to replace the remaining 15 with the funds that are being proposed. Again, there's obsolete, they're obsolete, they don't make parts for this stuff anymore, so the technology now is completely different from what was in there originally. The second is a multi-year funded project, this is our, the basement at the water plant, the piping system, it's a pipe gallery. We're asking for $75,000, and this last time it was done, it was in 1993. Literally today, they just finished the first section of it, so I, I didn't, I wasn't able to put pictures in there of, of that, but anyway, it's all rehabbed, and it'll give us to extend the service life of the piping system there to maintain for the plant integrity. And then the last funded project, or recommended project for this fiscal year is our South Custer Booster Station upgrades, Phase Two. This station re-boosts pressure in the western communities that are up there on that map. It's $149,000 that we're proposing to allocate to that project code. The total project cost is $886,000. This will add redundancy and capacity to the station, it'll have new pumps, building expansion, we'll replace the generator and the communication system. This is in our sanitary survey by the state, so it's a regulated requirement for us to make this upgrade, we just don't need to do it right now, the flows are not showing that need, but they will be in the future, so we're just planning on for that investment when we need to. And then last is the raw water pump station project, it's a motor and vertical frequency drive improvement. We're planning on rehabilitating some of our larger pumps out there to maintain and improve the capacity for pumping. We'll replace the motors with more efficient motors and the drives, so the larger motors will be able to run more streamlined, so we won't have such high power costs. So, the pumps and motors are between 35 and 70 years old, and this is for transferring raw water between the Monroe, to the Monroe Plant as well as Frenchtown, and this is paid for between the partnership by ownership percentages. So, with that, is there any questions?
Questions for Barry.
Do we have a strategic plan for any lead pipe replacement that they're going to recommend that we replace in the future, which may have to happen? Do you have any plan in mind on how that would work?
Yes, we actually have planned out for quite a Yes. We actually have planned out for quite a, actually, when we did our asset management plan this past year, we have it planned out to 2057 is what we proposed to the state of Michigan. They give us originally 20 years, but with your asset management plan, they're allowing you to adjust that to meet the local requirements. So like, as the question that Council Felder pointed out, are we sustaining our road and funding for us to maintain, you know, do our roads? We don't want to replace a water main, rip up a road, and then have to come back and repave it, or vice versa. So we're trying to coordinate those efforts. So not the saying where we have to delay it, but they did give us that opportunity. So it is a coordinated strategic plan with roadway, with water main projects, yes, and which address the lead and copper. Sorry, I didn't really say that, but.
Other questions for Barry? See you in the morning. Thank you, Barry.
Yep.
Stu?
We have about seven minutes.
Yeah. It, you know, I don't know if there's the next steps. I think we have, Mr. Green will give a quick synopsis.
Yes. Well, actually, we're in the home stretch on the capital improvements budget at this point. For staff, this actually begins, this whole process, in now late September, early October, and we begin getting forms together, getting our, what we're going to be doing, what we're going to be sending out to the various departments and agencies that request funding from us. Once those go out, then the CIP budget team begins to meet. That's made up of Mr. Pastu, Ed Sell, Matt Wallace this year, and myself. And we begin meeting with the various departments, and again, agencies, and looking at that. We formulate a budget that goes out to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has an opportunity to review it, and then by February 1st, the Planning Commission has to have a recommendation to the City Council. That recommendation is in. At this point, we're now looking at when the public hearing is going to be. The city charter indicates that it will be held the third week of February, which will be next week, at the second meeting. And at that time, we'll also be recommending and looking for action, although the council by charter has the right to take action as late as the last day in February. But typically, it goes with the last meeting of the month in February is when we try to have it wrapped up and, and have it approved. So that's what you're looking at right now, is we're kind of doing this where we have invited the Citizens Planning Commission members to be here with us tonight. Several of them are here tonight. We had went through this with them at their Planning Commission meeting. They are here to hear the, go through the workshop. But again, the next time we meet will be for the public hearing and for looking at action on this, the budget's been proposed. That's it.
Questions for Mr. Green?
No. Thank you.
A couple of quick items we'll try and get through. I, I put together in the, with the assistance of the city attorney, on the fact sheet, talked a little bit about banners over our city roadways. Again, it's looking at some case law, trying to, if you will, find ourselves so that we don't find ourselves into a difficult situation. But clearly, there was a case back in 2015, Supreme Court case Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, that really kind of threw everything into a kind of a change from what we've all been used to regarding sign administration. In particular, the essence of it is, we're not in, we can no longer content, control for content. And so one of the suggestions, and I've been approaching it, is I've let other nonprofit or other organizations from 2017, we would approve their application with the understanding it will, we will no longer doing that. And basically, what I'm looking for 2019 is just to do away with all of the banners going over the street, in part because you theoretically could open yourself up to a commercial interest, because if to deny them, we'd be regulating content and/or potentially some objectionable organization that wants to celebrate some objectionable event, or remembrance, or individual. And so I think the safe way to play it is, is to simply prohibit, you know, the use of banners that we have in the past. And it's not, has nothing to do with any of the organizations, but it's, it's the fear that you may find yourself, that you have to put up a banner that you would find very, very objectionable and, and/or serving a commercial purpose. So I just, in part of this, wanted to let you know, in the event that you're contacted, why I'm denying, you know, the rest of the banner applications going forward. Questions?
See any questions, if there are? Some, the way things are moving forward, I'll just say regarding signs and, and what's permissible.
Yep.
Yes. Kelly?
Yeah, I was going to say something to that effect, what the mayor was talking about, the sign ordinance. It's been an issue. I don't know if you've become aware of, that it's been an issue over the years with the businesses, especially downtown. I don't know if it's, if the ordinance is complete yet, but I'm just wondering if you'll get some pushback regarding this because of the sign ordinance, or lack of a clear sign ordinance?
Well, clearly, it, I will tell you, first, we, we're finishing up, or close to finishing up, the zoning ordinance that, that goes with the master plan that was adopted over a year ago. And part of that next step of it is, is the signed ordinance that goes for the commercial end of it, to make sure. But clearly, in light of that Reed versus Gilbert, Arizona case, that you have to look at your commercial signs a lot closer, so that you're making sure that you're not, you know, regulating content. And so it is, it's one of those things, it's almost, if you allow one, then it's almost, or deny one, but allow something else, you find yourself in a kind of a difficult spot, so.
Couple minutes.
I handed out, in front of you, lawn maintenance contract. Mr. Lewis, if he comes up to the podium, be available to answer any questions. But he put together this summary regarding different, we have six different groups of, of lawn maintenance contracts, three of which are under contract through 2021. Let me go through a couple of them real quick. When you look at the, the fifth and sixth bullet, E and F, Riverbank Vegetation, one of the things, if you remember, with our agreement with IHM, that, that we are now engaged more in keeping that the riverbank clear. And as discussed during the capital improvements, we put $100,000 for other improvements at the Heritage Court, or some of which would be clearing of brush and scrub brush along the riverbank. We are looking to go toward having our DPS now handle a lot of that responsibility. We think that with the proper mowing attachment to a tractor, that we should be able to do that, because there will be more and more of it, and it is a very important item to, you know, to keep the, the appearance of that. So that would be one where we're not planning on going out for bid, but certainly just internally looking to, to do more and more of that. The ordinance mowing, we put out there, that would be the high grass predominantly, and so that's up. I think it's just time to, to look at that, and we'll carry forward with that. The other one with the group B regarding Woodland Memorial Place, I know there's been some questions about it in the past, but our intent would be to look at, to put that out to bid, unless there's any other questions, thoughts, or comments related to that.
Any questions this evening? If not, you can always forward those to Mr. Pastu. I, I might send some on the Woodland and those items, but unfortunately, I know we have time, because we have to do the, prepare for the council meeting regarding some of the things Clark needs to do, but I just, Mr. Pastu?
Yeah, I think I may bring this back for a little further, particularly with the Woodland. I know there's been concerns in the past about the, the maintenance associated with it, and so we should probably have a little longer dialogue with that. But the others, if you're okay with it, we're going to proceed as mentioned.
I agree with that. Any other comments?
Nope.
Sorry to make it go quickly, but I know that there's, with the getting the technology set for the council meeting, there's some additional time that's needed today. So with that, we'll close the council work session and be prepared for the council meeting.